Morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 21st, 2021 Strategic Planning Committee. This committee gives us an opportunity to discuss certain topics in depth. Today, we'll be going over affordable housing and we introduce to you Sarah Odeo with the Development Finance Initiative.
Hello?
Good morning. Yeah, typically, we do start planning commission meetings with an opportunity for public comment. So I do see one member of the public here, Mr. Larry Hellfand trying to chat to him to see if he wanted to speak or just here to watch. We also could do that. If I don't hear back from him relatively soon, could try that later in the meeting to check in. In the meantime, I will say thank you, everyone, for attending. So this topic was referred a few months ago, I believe, by Commissioner Fox in the report of planning commission. Really, a lot of interest in the commission, the planning commission in general, about how affordable housing gets funded. So we did invite Sarah, who is Senior Project Manager with the Development Finance Institute at UNC Chapel Hill, specializing in affordable housing, among other things. And then another speaker from a affordable housing developer who had to cancel last minute, from Casa, who operates a lot in Raleigh. So I don't know if maybe before Sarah takes it away, if Roberta, who I think referred it, had anything in particular to mention about why we're here, this topic in general? Or if not, we can go right to the right to the presentation.
Thanks, Sarah. Are you guys able to hear me? The room's getting a little bit full here. Okay. Originally, I referred this. We see a lot of, we're seeing a lot more affordable products coming through the planning commission. And then there has been a request of planning commissioners to include some amount of affordability in other types of projects. And so I thought, understanding the mechanisms of funding affordable housing would help us to make a determination when that was an appropriate ask or an appropriate incorporation into other zoning cases.
Hey, great. Yeah, without, I think, any further comments, Sarah. Take it away.
Can I have sharing capabilities?
Sure, just give me one second.
While we get started on that, I'll say that, you know, the topic of affordable housing and financing affordable housing is massive, right? And so I focused in on a very narrow slice today. But, you know, given, you know, I'd like to spend as much time after the presentation, which will be pretty brief for questions, right? Because I realized that the levels of your experience with affordable housing may differ. And so the goal of this presentation is just to be pretty high level. I say these things always benefit from case studies, which we were going to get from the developer. So we don't have a case study today, but I'm happy to talk through projects or specific projects at the end, if you have any. With that being said, shared. So, as Ira said, my name is Sarah Odeo. I am a project manager with the Development Finance Initiative at UNC Chapel Hill School of Government. So before we get started, I'll introduce, you know, who we are and why we know about this topic. I'll then get into what do we mean by affordable housing? And then the goal of today is really to cover the topic again at a high level of what it is to finance multifamily rental housing for low-income households specifically, right? And so the UNC School of Government, we are a part of UNC Chapel Hill. And our work is a little bit different from the other schools in that while training, you know, the next generation of public administration, public administrators is a big part of what we do. The biggest part of what we do is provide support for local governments, staff, elected officials across the state. We are a nonpartisan, policy-neutral, and our goal is always to be responsive to the needs of local governments. So DFI was born out of that, related to the needs of local governments to really understand their role in real estate development and finance. And so local governments bring us on to help them identify a project or respond to a project that meets the public interests. And we usually take our partners from, a big part of our work is taking our partners from an idea, which you'll see later when we talk about the pre-development process, through to helping them find a development partner to actually execute on the vision that they have for development in their community. So what is affordable housing? You know, depending on who you're talking to, they might talk, people might, you know, refer to it in different ways. From kind of a typical way to think about it is that housing is affordable if you don't have to spend more than 30% of your annual income on housing-related expenses, right? Right now, in Raleigh, I believe, 87% of your extremely low-income households are definitely spending more than 30%, and in most cases, more than 50% on affordable, on housing costs, right? So to be affordable, the idea is that you are only spending a portion of your income on housing, leaving the rest up to all of those other things that, you know, really suck up your money, like healthcare, transportation, and food. So if we look at this, just to give you an idea, you know, Wake County is actually a very high-income community. So the area median income is about $95,700. And the AMI is reported on the level of a family of four, okay? And then we bring it down and we understand it at household size and at those different levels. But breaking it down by households at each income level, right? We talk about households that's extremely low, and that's earning 30% of the area median income. Very low income, which is low 50%, low income, which is typically 50 to 60, but sometimes goes up to 80%. And then moderate income, which also can vary by community, how that's defined. Because Wake is a very high-income community, you know, that moderate income is usually capped around 100%. Once you reach into the 120, you are actually talking about people earning, right? Maximum housing costs are determined relative to the household size and income, right? And so when thinking about building affordable housing, what's really interesting about Wake is that the thresholds for rent are so high for extremely low, right? So here you see rent levels, not rent, housing cost levels, up to a two-bedroom, right? So this can go up to four-bedroom, but I didn't want to show four-bedroom. So here, it's, you know, for an extremely low income, we would say a unit or a house is affordable if they're not spending more than $650 a month on their housing. But for many, that is still too high. And that is a function of the fact that the median in the area is so high. So there's often, you know, people usually talk about affordable housing. A lot of people talk about affordable housing synonymously with multifamily rental. But there is a massive spectrum related to providing affordable housing, right? And it comes down to local governments and their policy decisions about where they want to enter, right? And what the priorities are. So on kind of one plane, we're talking about interventions that on one side provide ongoing affordability. So thinking about a rental product. And then the other direction, wealth, and that is more a home ownership. And then there's also just thinking about how you produce it, how you preserve it. And so on the other plane is new construction, so building more. And then on the other is preservation. There are some units that are naturally affordable. And especially in high-pressure communities like Raleigh, preservation is important, right? Ensuring that units that are already affordable remain. And so the goal for today, and I think what you mostly see, is multifamily rental is going to be talking about just this part of the spectrum. But I did want to show you this, that you understand that it is really just one piece in delivering and kind of fulfilling the needs of a community when it comes to housing. So digging into financing multifamily. Finance with multifamily rental is, really, you have to think about the pre-development process overall. Because it does impact how everything plays out, right? In a typical pre-development process, when you're putting together a development, you know, it starts with an idea. From there, the developer will go out and get site control. That does not mean that they necessarily acquire the property. In most cases, they just get an option on it, right? So that they can do their due diligence. From there, they do their due diligence, right? And that includes a feasibility analysis. So what can we build? How many units we can fit? Can we get it financed? What will that look like? Do we need additional funding sources to make work? This process is the same, whether you're looking at building an affordable product or a market-rate product. It is the same thing, right? Which is how do we make sure that we can actually build something that will work? And by work, it means that we'll have a market and that we will be able to finance. From there, developers, once they feel like, okay, we've got a deal, this is what it looks like, we can do this. They go out and identify partners, they put together an ownership entity, they work on the designs. And only after that do they really come to you, right, as a planning commission? So they've spent a lot of money structuring these deals. And at that point is when they come forward and they said, okay, we've got, here are our designs, here's what we plan to do. And so we need our variance or whatever it might be in order to make this work. And so with this process, in the pre-development process, there's a lot of money spent upfront to figure it out. And there's a lot of uncertainty, especially early on in this process. And it's really once they get, say, their zoning in place, all their entitlements in place, that there is a lot more, less risk that the project won't have, right? Your big point in the process. And then from there, they'll go and acquire and build, finalize the defines, kind of really dig into it, close on financing, and make the progress. So going back to the early part of this process, which is the feasibility analysis, right? Figuring out if you can make a deal work. Each developer is going to have their own criteria, right? They're going to have a certain type of product that they want to build. And this is for any kind of developer, again, how affordable or market rate, whatever it might be. They know what they like to build and they like to focus on that product, okay? But the fundamentals of actually structuring a feasible deal are the same, right? And it is an iterative process. They'll look at the market, what does the market tell them? What they can fit on the site? They feed that into the financials, community interests. Okay, is this going to be a problem, right? Are we going to face issues with the neighborhood not wanting a project of this size? Okay, let's go back and adjust, what can we do from there? And so it kind of goes around on itself in order to structure the deal. And I'll say affordable housing, more so, right? Multifamily rental for low-income households is more so because the financials, in many cases, drive a lot of the details of the market and the site. So here's an example of an 80-unit development that cost about $13 million to construct, okay? On the left side, you've got a unit that has rents at $850, so below market rents. And on the right, you have one that is market, so about $1,400 for one-bedrooms, okay? The amount of loan, right? The loan size that this project can take on is based exclusively on the ability to make payments, right? It's pretty basic how you size a loan, right? How much operating income will you have after your rents, your revenue and your expenses? And how much of a loan will you be able to cover over time? Now, naturally, if your revenue is lower, because your rents are lower, your operating income, you'll have a lower, will be lower, and you'll have a lower loan size, right? It's pretty, I think, on that end intuitive. But because of that, right? And because of the fact that when you're making an affordable development, you are actually putting restrictions on the property. Market rate and affordable units, they end up requiring totally distinct funding sources. You're just not playing in the same pool anymore, right? The second you've got those restrictions, you now have different lenders at the table and you have different equity partners, right? Investors are looking at the potential for financial returns. So if they put $3.2 million into a project, they expect to get back this percentage of that on an annual basis. When you sell the product, they'll expect this much, right? The affordable housing pool is just different, right? Because your cash flows are very low naturally. So after you pay out for your debt service, you don't actually have that much cash to pay back an investor over time. And so different investors that are comfortable with different restrictions on their properties, different returns are required to make these projects work. And so we have to think of them as completely different in the worlds that they exist. And so a common kind of misconception is that you can just say, well, restrict those units and that's it, right? And that you can cross-subsidize. So the idea of cross-subsidizing with the more, the higher rent units, cross-subsidizing lower rent units. The challenge with that, and I'm not saying it's impossible, because that is not the case. What I'm saying is the challenge is that you are now dealing with a different pool of investors altogether that are willing to take on those restrictions on those units. And your lenders get a little bit skittish about those restrictions as well. And so those two kind of playing together in the pool have a little bit more complexity than most people expect. It is not impossible, but it is more challenging. So I need to flag, that's why I think typically we'll see a market-rate developer get a little bit nervous about the idea of setting aside some units for affordability. But it is done. I am just flagging why that discomfort happens. So how do we address the gap on the affordable units? Alternate equity sources, as I've said, are required to fill this gap. It is not going to be your traditional investor. And so there are many ways in which we can support affordable housing production, right? You could do it on the demand side, which is putting funds basically in the hands of the tenant. Or you can do it on the supply side. And that is putting hands and money into the hands of the developer to actually project together. There are public avenues, right? These are the rental vouchers, project-based vouchers. Public housing is the most kind of traditional public funding source for this. And then you have public-private, right? The low-income housing tax credit, which I will dig into, is the biggest, right? Public-private producer of affordable units in multifamily development. And then there's the kind of more, I'll say, passive approach, right? Which is removing barriers to production. And through the space is also just the subsidies that come down for private development. So this is your world of local governments providing subsidies for projects, through other federal sources like Home, CBG, temporary sources like the American Rescue Plan. And there are also private approaches, right? So there are non-traditional loans on the supply side that are very important to making these projects, these multifamily rental projects work. Now, the thing with all of these sources, right? And all of these forms of production is that they come with strengths, right? In particular, when you're talking about public funds going into private development, naturally, there are going to be restrictions about how, where, what gets done. Because we are trying to protect, you know, the taxpayer dollar, right? So anytime you're looking at a funding source to fill the gap for an affordable multifamily project, they come with restrictions, right? So the funding source is in many ways driving the development. So while I showed you the kind of the iterative process, while typically, you know, the market and the site will drive the financial, and then you go from there. In this case, that financial is really driving what can be done on the site, what can be done to meet the needs of the market. And it goes the details such as, you know, where it's located, how dense it can be, what the design has to be, right? You see a lot of Lytec development that has a similar look and feel. And that's because the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency is dictating what they need to look like in many ways. The percent of units that have to be affordable, that comes down to regulation. How it has to be monitored, underwriting criteria, right? How, what the operating reserve has to be, how quickly your income can grow, how quickly expenses grow. So all of those elements are directly related to the funding source. And each funding source is just kind of a little bit different, right? So Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, I'll dig into it because it has one of the biggest impacts on, you probably see a lot of Lytech, right? It's probably the biggest thing that you see as a commission. And we call it Lytec, Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, Lytec. It is a federal program that provides tax credits to acquire, rehab, or build new affordable rental units. Local governments cannot access this, it has to be awarded to private developers or nonprofits. And it goes into the deal as equity. So it goes into a project as a 9%, so it's a much higher subsidy, but it is very competitive. Or a 4% tax credit, which is a much lower subsidy, but it's automatic. So in many ways, it's very attractive in areas like Wake County, where the demand is so high. And you have local governments that are willing to help fill the gap in order to make sure that they can get more units back. And while it's a federal program, it is administered at the state level. And the state level is the one where they're going to set a lot of these requirements that impact location, affordability, all of those details. And so NCHFA is the agency that oversees this program in North Carolina. And they will monitor the project over a 30-year compliance period. The document that's published on an annual basis, and I encourage you to go look at it to really understand kind of how specific the program is. It's updated annually and it has all of the criteria and requirements related to the level of market demand that has to exist, targeting households, what makes a suitable site, I'll show you that now. The financial structure, the experience of the developer and the management team, design, and even energy efficiency on these designs. And so these Lytec site requirements include neighborhood characteristics, proximity to amenities, transit, absence of incompatible uses, it's a big one. Visibility, right? And so all of this, right? If you are a developer competing to get a tax credit that will make or break your deal, right? You are going to follow these rules very strictly because it's going to be critical to actually having a project at the end of it. Now, the thing is, for, when you're looking at a project at 60% AMI, so, you know, one bedroom's at $850, pretty high, right? You can make that work with loan and Lytec, right? That is going to fill your gap. When you're trying to do deeper affordability, though, various sources come into play. And so you're then dealing with loan, Lytec, an RPP rental production loan that comes through the Housing Finance Agency, and often a local source. So if I looked at the projects, I looked at the projects that were awarded in Raleigh in the last several years, and almost all of them had some sort of subsidy in the form of a loan, probably a reasonable loan, from the city of Raleigh, right? And so making these deals work really comes down to various partners. And each of those partners is going to have an idea of what needs to be done and where. So going back, you know, to the pre-development process for affordable housing specifically, financing and how you financing is very much more prescribed. And so you spend a lot of time, by the time you get to that part of entitlement, right? You've already tried to check off a lot of boxes that are required. So, any questions? I, I thought I was going to be one of two people, so it's more brief, maybe, than I could have done, but.
Sarah, that was a fantastic overview, very, very well presented. I see a question from Roberta.
Yeah, I think maybe Sarah too, if you wouldn't mind stopping sharing your screen.
I'm trying to stop.
Sure.
Having, there it is, okay. I might spend more time on Zoom than WebEx, so I apologize.
Thank you so much for that, Sarah. A question. You talked about some of the strings that come along, and maybe this is specific to Lytec, but are there requirements for things like building materials or size of units and the amount of parking?
Yes, there are. So if you look at the Qualified Allocation Plan, right? There is actually a design document, an appendix, that lays all that out. I believe the NCHFA requirement right now is 1.75 parking spaces per unit. And then, but what's important about that is that they do specify that they will defer to the local zoning regarding parking, right? So if you have a, an area where the requirement is one parking space per unit, they will allow that. What some people try to do, and it doesn't work, is they try to kind of just put an exemption on a single property. And NCHFA doesn't, and my understanding is they don't look kindly for that. In terms of design size of unit, there is a minimum size of a unit, so I think it's Studio 375. You know, one bedroom has to be at least 660 square feet, and it kind of goes from there.
Have you ever come across an instance where, like, a local municipality has removed parking requirements altogether? So there is a zero parking requirement? And what the impact is?
I have, well, in terms of on the actual project?
Yeah.
Well, so I believe that downtown Durham right now, don't quote me on this. I believe that they do have a no-parking requirement in the downtown Durham overlay. But even then, NCHFA is going to require some amount of parking. And that's just to protect the residents, the tenants, because that, maybe they have to travel far for work, maybe they just need parking. And so not to disadvantage them. And also, you know, a wealthier person might be able to compete for a parking spot in a public deck and pay for it. Your low-income resident won't. So I don't think I've ever seen them eliminate. I put money on them never actually eliminating and allowing for zero parking. But I have seen it go as low as 0.75.
I think in most cases, most municipalities, local municipalities require more parking, too, when you get into some of the exterior areas, the more metro you are, you know, that's when you start to have these kinds of conversations. Nicole, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you for being with me. I have a new laptop that's not a touchscreen, so when I'm muting and unmuting, I'm trying to move over to it. So, good morning, Sarah, thank you so much. That was a really great overview. I really appreciate it. And, and I'm glad that Roberta asked that question because I think my concern sometimes with some of our text changes or policy changes is exactly what you said. We're doing it in the spirit of encouraging affordable housing, but are we really unintentionally? But are we really unintentionally hurting it? You know, because maybe the, the Lytec requirements are going to say, well, no, you can't do that. So I worry sometimes that we might approve something without understanding what we're doing long-term, um, to, to affordable housing. And so I, I appreciate that question and response. And also, it's just, I think one of my great frustrations is really by the time it gets to us, it's kind of too late to, to try to mandate. I mean, aside from the fact that we can't mandate affordable housing, but to even have the discussion, you know, really all we can do by the time it gets to the planning commission is just express our frustration, which I do. Um, but there's really nothing that we can do at that point. So I think my, my interest is in how we can make it more attractive for developers when they're putting together the deal to, um, you know, look at more affordable housing. Deals, because when I talk to developers and I try very hard to understand their side too, you know, they, they'll say things like, well, uh, we would love to do more affordable housing, but it has to make sense. The numbers have to make sense. So what do we have to do? What do the cities have to do? What do we have to do from a policy perspective to make it make sense? Especially in places like Raleigh where we see naturally occurring affordable housing being replaced with market rate housing. How can we make it make sense when they're putting it together?
So I'll start by saying that I can't advise on policy, right? What I can say is that when it comes to development, you know, as I showed on the pre-development, there's, there's a lot of risk very early on. And so any way that a developer can have more certainty, maybe the zoning is already in place for the level of density that's needed. Um, any way that they can have more certainty early on in the process that the deal they're trying to put together could work, right? It's not going to get shut down by the local government later on. Um, all of that helps that, if that makes sense, so.
Can I offer a couple of comments, um, to that point? Um, I think some things that we can keep in mind that maybe challenges for at least a Lytec developer, we can, we can go that avenue. Is applications are due, preliminary applications are due in the beginning of January, and then full applications are due in May. In May, we have to have zoning approved. So if the, the, if we do see a case that comes in, we, most of the, uh, Lytec developers in Wake County are accustomed to coming in very early. But in terms of delays, um, delays can't be afforded if they're going to go in through the competitive application process. So they have to have zoning before, uh, like May 15th typically. So that's one area where we can help. Another conceptual area where we can, um, kind of put in, you know, on our, you know, affordable housing developer hat, so to speak, is with that, uh, qualified allocation plan. They have, um, Sarah put the chart of distance from amenities. Some areas in Raleigh are essentially food deserts where, um, we have to be within, I think it's a 1.25 miles of, in a metro area. But if you look in southeast Raleigh, there's no grocery or pharmacy, um, in certain areas, and so you actually won't score. So a lot of times in this past year too, we did not see any nine percent awards in Raleigh. Um, so that's, that's troublesome, but what that means is there's a couple of things at play. One is cost, um, is high. Two is maybe perhaps certain areas where it is lower cost, maybe don't score because of the food deserts. So when we're thinking of, you know, um, putting in, you know, uh, some retail or grocery that helps bring um, kind of food to areas and make it, uh, be able to provide housing for, on, on the Lytec side. Some of those are, um, some things that we can do to be thinking about, um, supporting, uh, you know, uh, Lytec developers. Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Yeah, to follow up on what you're saying and to, to be like really direct is, is basically when we allow projects to move forward that are grocery stores and are pharmacies that are not related to an affordable project, they actually make it easier for an affordable developer to come in later because the proximity is now better. Is that, so that's what I'm understanding, okay. And then, um, I had another question about, um, Sarah, your chart with the supply side. Can you talk a little bit more about vouchers?
Yes, so vouchers are limited, unfortunately, right? Um, there are section eight vouchers is the program. Um, I think people usually can think of it as, um, tenant vouchers, right? Where you receive a voucher and it's, the value is fair market value. Um, and, but the, the tenant themselves only pay what they can afford, so relative to their income. But the landlord receives the full fair market value. Those can be project based, um, so taken away from kind of, not taken away from tenant, but dedicated to a unit instead. And so the unit can be built at fair market value with those rents ongoing. And again, the tenant only pays what they can.
Sarah, um, there was a question from one of the attendees. In many large cities, they use four percent Lytec and 80/20 projects, but this is very rare in North Carolina. Do you see this as, do you see this being a tool that the larger North Carolina cities might eventually be able to use?
Well, I mean, the, the problem with four percent is, uh, really just basic, which is nine percent tax credit is going to cover up to 90% of your capital that you need. And the four percent is only going to do up to 40%, right? And so there will be a gap in your capital stack. So if you have a partner, someone who is willing to fill that gap, then you can do more four percent deals. Um, the challenge is if you don't have that additional source to fill it. And so it's usually local governments that make four percent.
Can I offer one more, this is on a clarification, the 80/20. If that is specific to 80% of the units being market rate and 20% of the units being affordable, that actually doesn't qualify for a Lytec. Uh, I mean, you can do 20% of those units have to be at 50% of area median income, but it's, it's very, very tricky. Um, and Sarah is absolutely correct that government support is, is often required. I saw, uh, Ira and.
Yeah, I, I had a comment going back to parking. So if Bynum is related to talk to Lytec, I don't want to derail us and then come back, so.
Yeah, I'm about Lytec.
Okay, go ahead, Bynum.
And then I have. I was just gonna, oh, go ahead.
Just about parking to circle back on that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that city of Raleigh, um, has actually been very successful in supporting four percent deals. I think we're one of the few jurisdictions in North Carolina that has cracked that nut. Um, and Larry Jarvis, who is Director of Raleigh's Housing and Neighborhoods, had big success with that in Durham and has brought that same strategy to Raleigh and it, um, it, you know, uh, Jennifer, Commissioner, and you made the point that, um, there were no nine percent deals in Raleigh this last go around. There just aren't that many nine percent deals because they're so rich, right? With subsidy. And so what Raleigh recognizes is it's not, we're not going to pull the, you know, a meaningful number of those deals into our jurisdiction. But there is lots of opportunity for us to supplement four percent deals. Typically, if you can get a four percent, what it, what it seems, based on the conversations I've had with Larry, is if you can get a proposal for a four percent deal together, you're very likely to get that support. And the city really wants to help you bridge the gap on that. So I think that's a real point of success for us and our, um, municipal strategy.
And that's a really good point too. The four, there were four percents that were awarded. We saw one earlier this year. Um, and so I think that that's a really good, um, opportunity. What you'll see there is a difference between a four percent and a nine percent. As Sarah indicated, the qualified allocation plan puts some limits on the nine percent, so we can't see anything larger than 120 units. But on the four percents, we're not, uh, restricted to that. So you'll see larger projects typically, and that's where you get economies of scale, which make it, um, easier to, to work out. But you also need larger land and a larger footprint for that as well.
Um, so, so I'll just jump in circling back to parking, um, before that's really far in the rearview. Um, so in the, in the, in our UDO, we do have exemptions to parking. There are some that are zoning based, so downtown used to have an exemption and now requires no parking. Um, also a frontage will reduce your parking. And then there are other use-based exemption or reductions, um, proximity to transit, senior housing, um, tree preservation, whatever. One of those is affordable housing. Um, so we do have a reduction built into the code now. The speaker we had originally booked, Jess Brandis from CASA. You may remember she brought forward a rezoning on Michael J. Smith Lane, Carl Sandberg Court. It was Z821 approved not too long ago this year by council in April. So she actually came to us, um, city staff requires before every zoning, a, a conference, a pre-application conference. Um, she, they came, CASA came with a handful of properties, this being one of them, and was the first case she moved forward. So it was the most ready for development. And as part of that, was talking to us about that reduction. Um, and other, other ways to reduce, help reduce parking on that site. They also owned a site to the south that maybe could have absorbed some of that, whatever. Um, one of our advices to her was, um, because she was, she was saying that that reduction was insufficient, especially given, I think it was recently following a sort of global reduction in parking requirements for multifamily. So the reduction actually wasn't doing anything anymore because we had brought the base level standard down. I don't know if that's precisely true, but like give or take, right? So we lowered multifamily requirements across the board. Um, and so part of our advice to her was like, to help her try and get this product to work was, you can ask council to look at that reduction. Um, and she did that, I was sort of trying to find it in our documents. It has a text change number, so TC-8-21, I believe it was authorized by councils in May, um, around that timeframe. So PC should be seeing that, I see it listed here as drafting, it's not on the website, which leads me to believe it's still being drafted. Um, but certainly that recognized by a developer at least has something else we could do to help. Um, so maybe tweak that reduction to actually be a little bit more meaningful or helpful to them. So hopefully you'll see that soon. I don't know if Mr. York has any greater insight than the, the information I could find in our sort of spreadsheet of text changes. Um, but definitely something to think about and how that definitely more nuanced the way Sarah was describing it in relation to Lytec than I ever knew about, but, um, further stuff we could, we could try and change to make this easier.
Commissioner Bennett, did you have a question?
Thank you. Um, I was just, I, I was thinking, um, yes, after Roberta mentioned, I was kind of thinking what she was saying when she said it about when we see, um, more grocery stores and retail and things like that, we're actually supporting affordable housing. And I'm wondering if the way our consistencies, uh, determinations are made. I, I don't know that that's factored in. I don't know that there is any type of, um, assessment of the, the proximity of a grocery store to a development, particularly if it's in an area that is a food desert. I know, I believe I, I've seen in our new equity analysis section that we talk about if it's a food desert. But I don't know if there is anything in there that says a grocery store is in the vicinity. Roberta, do you have that answer? You're muted.
There we go, sorry. Um, well, one, uh, a couple of thoughts. I think the, the, the place where we can have the most impact on that, the, uh, where there are sites that are appropriate for multifamily affordable products, and there's also a need for a grocery store, is paying really close attention to area plans as they come through. So it's not on the rezoning side, it's on the comp plan amendment, area plan adoption side. Is maybe where we might, um, we might have more, uh, there might be more benefit realized if, if we, if we had, um, if we spent a little bit more time thinking about that piece of it.
Okay.
I think that might help. Um, and does that, and then, um, not to cut this one short, but, um, at some point, um, I wanted to circle back to vouchers.
I'm good.
When anyone's ready, you ready?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready, thank you.
Um, I'm trying to think of, um, obviously, conditions are voluntary. Um, and this might be a question for either Ira or Bynum or even David. Um, have we ever seen conditions where a developer voluntarily offered, um, dedicating, uh, units for voucher use or, um, declaring that they would accept vouchers? Has that ever been done? Is there a way, is, is there a way to tweak that piece of it?
The, um, template that the Attorney's Office and Housing and Neighborhoods worked together to develop, to offer to, um, prospective applicants, basically sets up a situation where, um, you know, the language kind of hangs on two pieces, the percent of units or the number of units, and then the length of time that they will be, uh, dedicated affordable. That template does not address vouchers. I don't know why it couldn't. David probably knows that better than I do. I, I think that's just as a level of sophistication or invention that we have not seen offered in, um, zoning conditions that bind legally affordable units. Frankly, a lot of the affordable projects that we see don't use the zoning condition because they're working with a private agreement through some other kind of guarantor to establish the affordability, the rate of affordability and the duration of affordability, right?
Ira.
Um, so I would say we'll probably never get a condition that says there will be units for vouchers because either you get a person, like a householder with a housing choice voucher, but that person has to choose to rent your unit. So if no one does that, then you have an empty unit there. Um, and vouchers are, you know, there's waiting lists are long. Um, and then the other way, you know, if you require, if you already have the project-based version of that, then you already know you have it. Um, but I think you, unless David said otherwise, you probably could have a condition that says we will accept them. Um, when I was working in fair housing before, um, one of our, the recommendations almost always made, unless someone already had it, was a source of income protection. Um, I don't know in North Carolina if there's anything preventing a municipality from having that. Um, some states have that overall, and then some in states that don't, um, municipalities can sometimes pass that. Um, I don't know about North, the North Carolina, sometimes doesn't let you do stuff. But anyway, what that means before David says we can't have it for some reason, the legislature says, is that, um, so you can't, you can't discriminate a tenant based on where they're paying their income, how, how they get their income. Most of the time that means a voucher for most people, but it also includes like, um, social security disability or, um, like child support or any other legal form of income that they may have. You can't, you can't ask them where their money's coming from or discriminate and like deny them because you don't like that they're paying with a voucher or something. Um, so I would often tell cities like, you should have that, and it's a, you know, a way to at least make it easier for someone who has a voucher to find something that's available to them. It lowers that barrier a bit. Um, the problem with that is then the enforcement is sort of like every other fair housing issue, which is, you know, you, you have to make a complaint to either the state agency or HUD or, uh, whatever, the federal agency that handles for housing complaints, and there's, they go to the Fair Housing Hearing Board and that kind of stuff. And sometimes people don't know that they can make that complaint. Um, we're lucky enough to have legal aid help with that, but even then, you know, getting someone to tell them, you know, this is illegal, you should fight this. Can be tricky. So I don't know if, if a zoning condition would make that easier and let the city investigate that differently than we would otherwise. Um, and I hate to put David on the spot to make a, make a sort of. And I hate to put David on the spot to make a, make a sort of legal judgment and all this stuff on the fly, but that is by far more common I've seen than zoning conditions, let's do it that way.
To answer your question, I don't mind being put on the spot, especially when I can honestly say I don't know the answer to that. The, but I'm happy to look into it and report back to the committee. It, it sounds almost like some type of a fair housing type thing that may be, you know, endorsed by the feds, in which case I think accepting a condition, if it was endorsed by the feds, may be an appropriate means of doing it. As far as a voucher, my only understanding as far as the vouchers are, we can't mandate them. And as far as accepting a condition, I don't, I I'm not sure I'd have to report back on that as well because I'm not sure whether we're trying to walk a fine line with zoning conditions right now, just because of the political environment down the street. And so that's all I'll say about that.
For me, if I ever heard a market rate developer offering in their conditions that they would accept vouchers, I would do a little dance in the sense that most market rate developers are going to say, we can't do that because of administration challenges. So when they receive a voucher, they, it's not as good as cash. They have to file it with the, the agency that's actually paying the cash in lieu. And so they're not going to get paid right away. The cash comes in from whatever the subsidy is. So it, from a, from a, from an administration perspective, most market rate developers just say flat, we do not accept vouchers. Now, that could be, you know, viewed in a couple of different ways, but that's, that's the, the, the way most of them say, I don't, I don't participate in that program. And what's unfortunate is even though we have a waitlist for vouchers, a lot of times vouchers are returned because there are no available units for people to rent from that actually accept those vouchers. So again, for me, if anybody offered a, a zoning condition that, that said that they would at least accept them, that would be I, from a compliance standpoint, I don't know how that would make its way through the system, but that's often where you also get choked on some of these things. If I may offer one other item, as we think about market rate developers offering affordable housing, there are nuances. So as a light tech developer, if I develop over four stories, I start to have to pay Davis Bacon wages, for example. And I have, and that is an additional 30% essentially on top of regular nor, labor costs. And there's all sorts of other conditions that we have to agree to that just make it that much more difficult. So I think that anytime we see an affordable housing project that comes through nine times out of 10, they're going to be in kind of those tertiary areas. So, because that's where it's, it's easiest to get done. Unfortunately, when there are a lot of subsidies that come available and a developer says, yes, we need the help to finance the project so that we can provide housing for families. Those, as Sarah indicated, they do come with a lot of strings. And the more strings that you have attached to the building, sometimes the tighter it gets and it chokes it. So some of the things just to kind of be thinking about in that regard. And that is also why a lot of market rate developers don't play in the space. It's because that there are just so many tight strings. There were a couple of questions from the public as well. Carmen, do you want to tee up some of our members of the public?
Sure. Mr. Helfant, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I really wasn't going to speak today, but when I listened to Commissioner Bennett, she basically expressed the same feelings that I have. I've presented before in front of the planning commission over these same issues. The problem is that developers, no matter how you look at it, developers are in control of conditions. The problem comes up, I guess, because you're caught in the middle. And I do sympathize with you in that you are, your hands are tied from the legislature in terms of what you can ask from a developer. But that being said, I've watched the city council meetings where if they want a condition in, they essentially in a roundabout way wind up getting that condition built in. The recent one was, I can't remember development, project numbers, I just remember locations. But the recent one was near 540 where the mayor decided that that development should have a coffee shop. And she more or less required that the developer come back with proposals to include a coffee shop. And even though the people only wanted residential. And I only use that as an example. And the second example, of course, is Smokey Hollow. And that's yet to be determined because there were so many options that Kane Development had to either include affordable housing within the project or just pay into a fund. And I'm still not sure how that has come out. But what I wanted to get to, I think you do have enough policies in place to do better with affordable housing. One in particular, and the project is going to come up, two projects are going to come very shortly in front of you, has to do with affordability and transit. And I don't understand why that card is not played more. And the other side of it is area plans. When area plans have a suggestion for if you build a certain height, you should come back with some proposal for affordable housing. And that seems to be a non-enforceable policy, and I just don't understand it. It's built into the code. It was passed by the people, passed by the council, just not enforced. And I understand that you run the risk of legislature punishment, I guess, but I think it's a risk worth taking. So the point I'm trying to get to and example I'm going to use is the area where Wegmans is. You know it well. There's a development on the corner, a small project that has affordability built into it. And I have to look to see exactly what the conditions were. But there was a bigger project right next to it, the north side project. And it has all the elements that you would need for affordability and transit. It's right, it's right next to a rail line, will probably have a rail stop. It's right on the access to Six Forks, major transit line. Yet there was no motivation to include any kind of affordable housing. And they're going to build a 20-story tower. The two coming up are even worse. One is going to be on Navajo Road, and it's going to displace people in apartments to build a 20-story tower. And if we can't find a way to do something about affordable housing for that project, then we might as well just give it up right here and now. And of course, the big one's going to come up, and I know it's going to force you to take the time. It's going to be again, the North Hills rezoning project with 40-story towers. That one is currently not allowed in the midtown area plan, but yet it's going to come to an area plan versus a rezoning project and where we move forward. So I'm only raising the point. I think your conversations today, I wish more of the public could listen. For me, it was very educational, and I was glad I had the opportunity to listen in. I just, I wish you'd find a way to make these more available to the public. I, and you do your best, you send out notifications, but I think people are just, well, not tuned into going through the internet to try to find meetings. So, but I applaud you for your efforts, and I hope you find a better way to handle affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Helfant. Appreciate your comments. Carmen was.
Yes. We also have Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook, are you there?
Mr. We are at 11:01, so we just want to be mindful of time. This is a one hour, and we'll give you some time to speak because I think we had a little bit of a late start, but go ahead.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I will second everything Mr. Helfant said. He did a great summary of what was going on. But I also wanted to go to the issue of not being able to provide for affordable housing, not requesting it. And I'm, I'm confused, and I've brought this before, the city councillors. Why is it that Durham and Chapel Hill can do inclusionary zoning and not Raleigh?
They've also faced some of their challenges as well, and I think that we're all trying to figure out the best way to approach some of this based on what is, what the tools are available in the legislation. But, but we're all, I can assure you from what I've seen as well, everybody's looking at the best possible outcomes, and we all feel challenged. But I think we'd like to, we're all seeing how we can do more.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that, but they've gone through the, the problem of trying to do this, and I don't see why Raleigh can't, at least even though there are problems, why they can't at least try. Affordable housing is at a premium here in Raleigh. So why don't we do everything that we can possibly do to provide for affordable housing? Especially when they're building 40-foot, 40-story buildings. Where, why can't we have some of them available for affordable housing? And not at 80% either. 50% or below.
We agree. So with that, we are at time. This was a really great discussion. Sarah, thank you so much for teeing us up with the level of content that you brought to the table today, spanning everything from financing to what's allowable and policy and challenges that developers face. I think from some of this, we can certainly drill down further because as we just experienced hearing from the public, there are still ways that, you know, could possibly be explored further. In that, I will go ahead and look at Ira to see if there's any other last minute comments or things as we part. Otherwise, I think.
No, um, we can close the meeting. I'll just say, you know, especially to Mr. Helfant's point. These meetings, this meeting was recorded. It'll go on the city's YouTube channel as every, you know, these, not every meeting we have is live on YouTube, but they all get recorded and posted there after the fact for, if you want, anyone wants to watch later. And then Sarah sends me her slides. It'll go in the report of this committee next week and to planning commission. That's usually how I do it, so that those are available to commissioners and anyone else. And then I know Chair Lamman talked in the intro about asking commissioners for what you want to talk about. I will say we can definitely plan on a meeting next month. We do have other stuff that's already been referred. So whether we take up those topics or something else that the, the committee is interested in, we will, can definitely have content. So we can definitely do that offline, but if you all want to plan on October the 19th for a discussion of something, definitely doable from staff's point of view.
And to that point, I think one of the things that we are doing is we are looking at schedules. 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning is prime time for some of our activities. So I think we'll just be sending a poll around to see as the committee goes forward. So tentatively for the 19th, but that may change.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
All right.
And thank you for joining us today.
Yes, thank you, Sarah.
Tuesday. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Bye, everybody.